Call the meeting to order, please rise for pledge.
My pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the November 5th Post Falls City Council Meeting. Shannon, please note that all council members are present with the exception of Councilor Wolf, who is excused tonight. Kind of looking out at the audience and it's almost like a church, except instead of front and back, it's all on one side. If you do leave in a hurry, and just don't get trampled at the door, because it looks like everybody's going to try to leave quick.
A right-leaning crowd tonight.
Yes, or left. We did start the evening with a very short workshop tonight, and are now in regular session. Under ceremonies, announcements, appointments, and presentations, we have several announcements. This is Election Day, polls are open until 8:00 PM. City Council seats 1, 3, and 5 are on the ballot. City Hall is not a polling place. If you don't know your polling place, you can find it by visiting the county website. And I'm going to go out on a limb, I know it's only 5, 6 o'clock, but I'm probably be the first ones to congratulate our council members who are running for election on their victories, and hopefully I won't be proven wrong, but when you're unopposed, it's a good thing for them.
Or there'll be three empty seats up there next time.
Don't jinx this.
Thomas Dewey.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. The 10th Annual Support, the End of Homelessness, Thursday, November 14th, 11:00 AM to 1:30 PM at the Silver Lake Mall. Enjoy over 45 different soups, prepared and served by local businesses and organizations. Tickets are $15, and proceeds support the St. Vincent de Paul Winter Warming Centers. Veterans Day is Monday, November 11th. City offices will be closed, Police Department will remain open. The Boat Launch at Carmelum Park closes on Monday, November 11th for the season. Donations are being accepted for the 21st Annual Holidays and Heroes. Monetary donations and food items can be dropped off at the Post Falls Police Department, 1717 East Polston, Cootney County Fire and Rescue at 1590 East Seltis Way, and the Cootney County Sheriff's Office and Coeur d'Alene Police Departments. And then on Tuesday, the 19th, at the Post Falls Chamber of Commerce Connect for lunch, I will be giving the State of the City address. Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
There are none tonight, sir.
Any declaration of conflict? With that, please present the consent calendar.
Item A is minutes, October 15th, 2019, City Council Meeting. Item B is payables, October 8 through October 28, 2019. Item C is memorandum of understanding with the Idaho Transportation Department for the Spokane Street and Seltis Way traffic signals. Item D is new plumbing building inspector request, and item E is construction easement with North Idaho Surgical Hospital Building LLC.
Any questions on the consent calendar?
I do want item D, I'm not sure who to address that to, but is that, obviously it's an ongoing position, do we feel there's going to be enough continued growth and building to justify that for a long term?
Yes, and looking at the revenues over the history of those two positions, we'll have more than enough revenue to cover it as an ongoing position.
Perfect, thank you.
And on the vehicle on that, is that a new vehicle purchase, or are there vehicles that could be used, or?
It's a new vehicle purchase, it'd just be the one-time purchase.
Okay. Any other questions? Continue motion.
Move for approval of the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item up on the agenda, we'll get back to my agenda, is public hearings.
We have none?
Mine's stuck, too.
Yeah, mine's stuck, I just wanted to get to the right spot. Tonight, we have none, followed by unfinished business, tonight we have none. Next item would be citizens issue, and this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. If anyone wishes to speak, come forward, name for the record. You know, we allot you five minutes, you got a timer up here to watch.
Hi, my name's Dell Williams, and I own a house at 2515 Pioneer Ridge, bought it back in 2003. At 2005, the sewer went into that area, Pioneer Ridge, which is north of Poline Street. And when I was living there, they sent me, the city sent me a bill for the sewer. My house is on septic tank up there, and I told them, I said, "Why am I receiving a bill?" And they said, "Well, it's going by your house, you have to pay for it." I said, "Well, that doesn't make any sense." And they said, "Well, it goes towards your hookup fee that you're going to have to hook up sooner or later when it goes, when your sewer fails." So I said, "Well, that's fine, so I'll make the payment every month, like, regular, and it goes to a savings account or something you guys have," or it goes towards my sewer hookup, and they said, "That's fine, that's correct." Well, after, well, 2019, I called down and find out what's going on, am I paid up yet? How long's this thing taken? Because I'm still making the payments on this. Talked to Craig, Craig says, "Best we can do is give you two years' worth of money back, we don't have no records of that, and basically, all the money you've paid in, you lost." I'm like, "Well, how's that possible? If you know I'm on septic, I'm not using sewer, I have 10 years' worth of bills that I've paid the city, I mean, everything's right there." I said, "All you have to do is sign something over that says, 'Hey, this house can hook up for free, he's already paid the hookup fee, just give me a note that says I can hook up and not have to pay that fee now that I've paid you guys $6,000.'" Craig says, "No, best I can do is two years' worth, about 1,700 bucks back to you, and that's about it." Well, after you pay in $6,000, you know, so, I had a choice, I could either talk to get my attorney, get her involved in this, and go that route with you guys, or I thought I'd come to the City Council, talk to them, tell them the issue that I have, you know, I mean, I have all the proof that you need, that the bills have been paid, paid by me every month. They sent a city worker out to verify that I was on septic, they verified it, and that's when Craig sent me the letter for two years. You know, and Craig said, "Well, that's the best he can do." Well, you know, I'm a longtime citizen of Post Falls, Idaho, I know that you have a four-year that they can go back on, and he only offered me two years to go back on worth of money coming back to me. So, I mean, it just seemed like I'm getting kind of the wrong deal from everybody that I talked to, so I thought I'd just come here and talk to you guys straight.
Are those copies that we can give staff, or are those your copies?
Oh, these are my copies, but I can make copies for you, no problem.
Could you get them and make sure we get a copy?
You bet.
I wouldn't need to be okay to, if I have the address, I don't need to.
Okay, so we'll, Shelley, can we?
We'll coordinate with Warren and Jason and get back to you, make sure I have your phone number before you leave.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
What was your address again?
2515 Pioneer Ridge.
Well, and you're on septic?
No, I'm on, well, I'm on, yes, I'm on septic at 2515.
I'm at 2508 Powderhorn Street.
Mm-hmm.
Which would just be on the street over.
Mm-hmm.
And I wouldn't think there's septic still up there. Look at you.
When I bought it in 2003, that was the only thing there was with septic, there was no sewer. Sewer didn't go until 2005, when we went past the house. So I've been paying on the sewers since 2005, and I have all the bills from 2009 for it, I don't have from 2005 up.
Well, welcome, neighbor.
Yeah. Thank you.
Again, finance will have your records, so we will be in contact with you. We'll touch base.
All right, thank you. I mean, I don't, is it wrong by asking just to get a thing that says, "Hey, you can hook up now because you've paid that," and just call that good? I mean...
I would like to, no, it's not wrong.
Okay.
But before we can give you an answer, I want to run through the charts.
All right.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Thanks for coming and bringing that forward. Next item up is new business, Post Falls Sanitation Contract Amendment. Jason?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What I have on the contract, what I have on the agenda tonight is a contract amendment that I'm going to ask council for approval on. Over the last, at least the five, last six years I've been at the city Post Falls, we meet quarterly with Post Falls Sanitation to go over any issues that we have, and we haven't had any issues, but they fill us in on any type of innovations that they're doing with garbage. It's, who knew that garbage could be innovative? But what they're doing is, they have put GPS trackers on their trucks, they've purchased new equipment in Post Falls, so there's six new garbage trucks within Post Falls, and they've also made it easier for my staff to notice if there's any missed cans or any type of additional service charges. If you have a missed can, the driver will note in the, on their laptop that they have in the truck, that there's no can out, and if there's any extra garbage, instead of dispute, the driver will take a picture of the extra garbage charge. So when it comes to my office and it's disputed, we can show that the garbage company did show that there's extra garbage charges. So they've done certain things within, well, how they currently, within our current contract that we have with them. So what we talked about with Post Falls Sanitation is, they've worked on the collection, the recycling, and the curbside service for residential. The next phase that they want to go into is they want to look at commercial. So what that means is they want to go and they take the, since they own the containers, they want to take the commercial containers, rehab them, or if they're not rehabable, to go in and replace them. With that investment, the estimation of doing that for the commercial businesses will be over a million dollars. And so what Post Falls Sanitation has asked is, if they go ahead and do that, would we be willing to extend the contract past 2026 when it expires? So I said, "I'll take it to council and see if they have, what their decision would be on that," so.
Jason, in your information provided in the packet, it said seven to 10 years, so it's just not decided at this point?
No, that was the proposal that they wanted, was to say, when the contract expires in 2026, the proposal that they would like would be a seven to 10 addition to your contract to try to recoup the million dollars that they put into the commercial containers.
And the other question I would have is, it's unusual unless you're a professional athlete to negotiate, renegotiate a contract in the middle of a contract.
Right.
Now, I know they had a good year, but is that something that we are comfortable with as a city to extend out based on pricing, et cetera?
I had also put in the council packet on the current pricing that's in the area, and the current pricing we have is one of the lowest in the area, and so I do feel comfortable with extending the contract based on the, there's certain indexes that they get to increase the contract, and there's also a surcharge if the fuel exceeds $3, whatever the diesel exceeds $3 a gallon, so they get a surcharge that's off and on each year depending on the price of fuel.
And then the, my last question would be for the residents of the city. The residents have not seen an increase in their sanitation for the last several years, correct?
Correct.
Because I know we've used some...
Fund balance to cover some... We have some fund balance in sanitation to cover those charges, but Post Falls Sanitation does get an increase based on their contract.
Okay. Joe?
So how open book are they with us as a city? Because it seems like a million dollars investment, they've already got six years left on their contract, and they're asking for another 10, so a 16-year period on a million dollar investment seems like a lot. Is this really just to pay for the million dollars in dumpsters, or they just want more?
Phil's in the audience, if you want, did you want to address that situation?
Okay, all right, if you guys, if it's not public comment, but okay if we bring Phil up?
I'm good. Phil Damiano, I own Post Falls Sanitation. So, yeah, it's a, you know, we're dumping a lot of dough into, with new trucks, new technology, into kind of preparing for the future. I would match our garbage companies' technology against anybody in the country as far as being up-to-date. I mean, you don't get any more up-to-date than fully automated collection, you don't get any more up-to-date than onboard computers and geo-tracking and geo-mapping and the things that we've done. And so, quite frankly, asking six years early to, for an extension, we have an unusual lineup of the planets. The planets are all lined up, we've got excellent tax laws, we have excellent depreciation laws, we have extremely low interest rates, we have an absolutely wonderful raging economy, and those things could change. So to come now, rather than five years from now, and say, "Hey, it's time to renegotiate a contract," and, which we do on occasion, it's very standard in the industry that you renegotiate your contracts, sometimes they go out to bid, most of the times they're renegotiated unless there's an issue, and to do it now, we might not be able to do it six years from now. We might have bad tax laws, we might have a retraction in the economy, we might have various other things. So we wanted to do it, we wanted to, you know, some of these bins are 25 years old, haven't seen a coat of paint, and so all of the recycled bins are 2012 or newer, all of the toters are 2006 or newer, and so we wanted to go in and replace all those commercial bins, and get an extension in the contract is part of that plan. Does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay, thank you.
I got one more question for Phil.
Sure.
You know, looking to the staff report on the costs of the recycling, going up so much, and I've seen, reading the paper, there's a facility, I believe, in Idaho Falls, or they're not taking the recycling goods like they were before, is that a concern? You can hold the price with the market.
Yeah, you want the good, the bad, or the ugly? I think there's only the ugly on that. Yes, it's a concern. Comingled recycling is a difficult proposition, and the Chinese cut off all of their imports, they're not taking any, and so there's a stockpile of that stuff in the United States, and a lot of it is just getting landfilled. And so, and there's no market for it, and so it's a commodity, and we're kind of struggling through this, but, you know, my professional opinion and the trade organizations that I belong to is that this problem isn't going to go away, and that in the next, in the next five years, you will probably see some changes in the recycling programs. They're being redone all over the country, I think that's a reality.
Shouldn't affect the contract, though?
Hmm?
Shouldn't affect this contract?
It shouldn't right now, I mean, you know, it's in our contract that we can negotiate the materials that we take, and if you just flat-out can't get rid of a commodity, or it costs you, you know, $200 a ton to get rid of it, currently, we're paying like $130 a ton to get rid of some things. So as the prices continue to increase, then we need to look at reducing the number of materials back to, you know, what I call the golden three, and that's cardboard, tin, and aluminum, kind of historically have had some value. The rest of the stuff is not good.
Okay. Thanks, Phil.
Okay.
Any other questions? Jason? You asked for a seven to 10, and do you have a recommendation, because council has to take action tonight, is that correct?
I would say we'll start with a seven.
I would move to approve the Post Falls Sanitation Contract Amendment for plus seven years. Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Thanks, Phil, thanks, Jason. Next item up is ordinances and resolutions, tonight we have none. Administrator staff report, Seltis Lift Station Improvement Project. Great.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Craig Bormpole, Utilities Manager. Quite often, you see us up here requesting authorization for design or construction services for some new infrastructure. Tonight is not one of those evenings. We wanted to take the opportunity tonight to introduce you to a couple other members of the water reclamation team, and talk to you about some of the work that we do on a regular basis to maintain our existing system. We try and do a lot of the work in-house, as much as we can, to be judicious in our use of resources that we have, and who better to do that than the guys who are out in the field doing that? So tonight with us, we have Adam Tate, our Chief Water Reclamation Operator, and Jason Chavez, our Assistant Chief Water Reclamation Operator. So I'll turn it over to them to talk to you about this project and some of the larger collection system in general.
Thank you for having us, Adam Tate, Chief Water Reclamation Operator. So we were asked to come and give a talk about our Seltis Lift Station Improvement Project we have going on. So just going to start things off, there are in total 14 operators altogether, and we take care of the oil treatment plant, which treats on average 2.8 million gallons a day, every day runs through the plant. We also take care of the collection system, which consists of 152 miles of gravity pipe. This is all give or take, because as we speak, we're constantly adding pipe every single day. But currently, we're roughly 152 miles of gravity pipe, 25 miles of force main, we maintain 33 lift stations, 76 pumps throughout those lift stations. We also manage the industrial pretreatment, so watching over all the businesses out there, seeing what they're dumping to us, stormwater, and all the lab, laboratory work for the plant. So there's a lot going on with just the 14 of us keeping all of that running. So kind of, these are some of the hot points that we go through when we pick a lift station that needs some maintenance on it. So we recently completed our master plan, which is in the final stages of being approved. So we looked at the master plan, routine maintenance and emergency repairs that we do at these various stations, how many call-outs we get, and whether, you know, what they're related to, whether it's equipment failure, backups, power outages, redundancy, so wastewater doesn't have the option of shutting down or stop working for any length of time, so we have redundancy everywhere, and then life expectancy at the station. So ideally, we have a handful of stations that are temporary, meaning they can be displaced at some point in the future by gravity, so we won't be paying for pumping, lifting them up multiple times. So a little bit of history on Seltis. Seltis Lift Station was one of the originals, it was built in the mid-1980s. The last major upgrade was done in the mid-'90s, and since then, pretty minimal work has been done, short of just some routine maintenance, keeping pumps running, small money put into it just for general wear and tear. Seltis Lift Station takes on, in general, everything between Chase Road and Maguire, north-south, everything runs through Seltis. At one point in time, Seltis was actually the biggest station in the city. Since then, things have grown, pipes have been added, it's still in the top four or five that we have, but... And then, Seltis is a triplex lift station, which is important later on in this talk, so a triplex meaning there's three pumps. So at any given time, if one pump goes down, we still have two more that are functional and ready to go, ideally. This is our, there's an aerial picture of the lift station, and then one inside the gate there, pretty tight quarters. It's located right out in front of our street department, so you've driven by it dozens of times, I'm sure, and maybe, hopefully you don't recognize it, ideally, we'd like you guys to not even know we're over there. But it's pretty tight quarters, not allowing them to work. You'll see some other pictures later on where all the pumps and mechanical equipment are actually underground, there's like a spiral staircase going into a bunker that we work in to maintain these pumps. So Seltis is, there's a lot, there's a lot of things going on with Seltis, and some of the reasons we picked that one particularly for this upgrade, improve system reliability, we've had a number of call-outs there over the years, a number of malfunctions happened there over the years. One of the biggest ones was replacing the non-functional pump. So years ago, we had some major equipment failures, 20-plus years ago, and dealing with the small budget they had back then, and ingenuity they had, they retrofitted some pump in there that just wouldn't work, undersized, too small, plugged up, pretty regular, so they wound up turning it off altogether. So our really nice lift station with three pumps quickly got downgraded to a duplex station with two pumps, very little redundancy, not a lot of room for error there. So that was a problem. So once we get under there, we found there's also a lot of other tasks to take care of, there's old broken valves that have been in there for 20, 30 years. And another one, there's a, we wanted to test out a new pump, so the current pumps that are in there, they're, they're the original, I think, I want to say these pumps were originally put in the '80s, I think they were upgraded once in the '90s, but they're old technology, high horsepower, low flow, so they put a lot of energy, a lot of money into these pumps with not a lot of return out of them. So these new pumps are smaller, more efficient, better flexibility on what they can do, just all around, better force in the long run. And actually, I'm going to let Jason, so I help out a little bit when they let me out of the office, but Jason does most of the actual hands-on work, and he kind of took over this project and got it going, and still pushing on it, so I'm going to let him talk about how it actually went, and how it is going. Good evening, as Adam said, my name's Jason Chavez, I'm the Assistant Chief Operator. My primary, my primary role is actually in the conveyance side, although working the work without him, he takes care of most of the treatment and the plant. I oversee four other guys beside myself in the conveyance department. We do have a crew that works on everything, so it's not just those four guys, but primarily it's the four guys out doing the daily routine maintenance until we have a project like this. So the Seltis Lift Station, which is, Adam went over how we started, and what we use as criteria to get to the point where we need to make an upgrade there. We'd like to definitely use innovative technology anytime we do a retrofit, although when you talk about doing a retrofit, you're not replacing a pump, you're not taking a pump that's already currently there and just putting another one in, wire it up, and send it on its way. As Adam mentioned, we had 20 horsepower, this 20 horsepower hydromatics were in there. What we have found, and we went through flight, is they have a new pump called a concerted pump, when we gave the numbers to the manufacturer, came back that we can now get the efficiency in the head and move the water with a 10-horsepower pump, much more efficient. We have a very small area to work in as far as a wet well, which is what collects water, we don't have any overflow at Seltis, so that's another big issue, being able to keep pumps running, also being able to use more of that wet well, and that, this pump will allow us to do that, because it is actually a submersible pump that we are now putting in a dry pit application, but it will not cavitate, you can take air, and then it'll pick up prime again by itself, unlike the other ones. We started out with Seltis, we had to replace a bypass line, was the first thing we had to do, we knew we had to go in and replace a bypass line. The valve was no good, been there for 20 years, we turned on it, we found out it did not work, fairly deep, 18 feet or so. So we put our heads together, we went through and made a plan, we got everybody on board, that way we had guys to work during the day before, because this was going to be a low-flow job, which means for us, low-flow, when everybody's asleep, come in and work at night, so the flows are down, the wet well doesn't fill as fast, bypass pumping's easier, safer for the operators. So we had to have a crew that would work the day, a crew that knew they were going to work that evening, and then a post crew to cover the guys that worked overnight, until they either got back to work a little bit late, or were off the next day. In replacing that line, we, it was deep, we had to step it, we had to go through a lot of planning, we did a lot of the work the day before in daylight, as much as we could, getting ready, prepping for it. As in any project, we got into it, and we ran into some lines we didn't know, we had a couple valves, a couple more valves after we started the project, that we found out would not seat, did not work. We'd exercised them, but we were never able to test them to see if they seat until we actually got into the project, because we couldn't shut the station down. So we ended up repairing a check valve, repairing an isolation valve, there'll be a couple pictures coming up, and I'll show you what those look like, it's not a small task, it sounds like a valve, but when we get down in the dry pit and you see the size of these valves, it takes a lot of safety and a lot of planning to get our operators in there to get these removed and put new ones in. So the picture on the right, if you see the bottom valve, that has the orange handle, that is actually just a check valve, it's a tennis check valve, 250... that is actually just a check valve, standard check valve, 250, 300 pounds, has to be bolted up, winches and manpower to lift it in place, take it out. The valve that we actually thought we had to replace, which we did also, is the isolation valve, which is the orange valve up top. So we were able to get both of those replaced after doing the digging outside and replacing the valves outside, making sure that our force mains were lined up so that we could bypass properly the next time to put the pump in. Picture on the left, that's a hydramatic. Those are the two that are working, the duplex pumps. Like I said, 20 horsepower pumps. You'll be able to see, I think we have a picture of me standing next to it. So five, five and a half feet tall with the base there. The stairs there is a spiral staircase. We're about 20 feet down when we reached the floor down there, so that we are in a dry pit. Just in the, wet well is just outside that wall. This is a picture of the conservator pump as we're installing and then getting it plumbed up. If you look at that pump, the difference between this pump, and this is the innovative part. We went out, we wanted to find something different. Usually when you put in a pump, you need to add VFDs, PLC, control system to run this pump. Those usually take up quite a bit of space. They usually have to be housed somewhere where they can be cooled in the summer, heated in the winter. This pump in itself, the top portion of that pump from about the blue, flight symbol on it, up is the actual VFD. This pump does not need starter, does not need a VFD up in a cabinet. It's all internal, which, that's what led us to this pump. Lower horsepower, high efficiency. It's built with an impeller technology, which is what Flight uses. But this impeller actually floats. It will reverse itself to unplug. It does a lot of things that we haven't seen in the industry before. This is the first of its kind in the wastewater industry. It's been tested, it's been out for quite a while in Europe because Flight comes from Sweden. They, a lot, millions of hours of testing over there, but we're seeing it now. And that's why we're pretty excited about getting it in, testing it, because it will unplug itself. It's supposed to do some pretty incredible things and be very efficient, which Flight isn't very efficient no matter what pump you use. This is us. So that's me standing next to it now, so you can see it's five, five and a half feet tall. How much smaller the Flight pump is than the hydramatic pump. That's not important, sometimes small things, but it makes it, in this application, it's very important. So much easier for operators, so much safer for operators to be able to move these in and out, to be able to do maintenance on them, pull them out through the top, do the work, put them back in safely. Lot less equipment. And that's another reason for trying to go this route with this station. We are almost finished with that. We're doing some plumbing. We are currently talking with the company because of how Flight's set up. And since we're retrofitting, like I said, we couldn't just plug and play, put another pump in. There's some different plumbing that has to be done. We're almost there. We're going to have a company, we built a template. They're going to build us the pipe. As soon as that's done, we've run the wire now, and we will get it wired up and give it a test run. Hopefully shortly. We were just in touch with Flight last week. We'll get their startup guy here and get it online and see what we can do with it. I think I will pass it back to Adam for the upgrades. He has a pretty good idea on those. Yeah, thanks, Jason. So yeah, Seltice is just about, well, we're in the process of wrapping up the final stages there. Jason did a good job touching on all that. It seemed like a really easy project to begin with. It kind of, I don't want to say exploded on us, but it turned into a much bigger job than we anticipated. But luckily, we've got some really good guys that know a lot of good things to get some things done. Save the city a ton of money, all these projects that we should do in-house because there's a lot of man-hours that went into getting this project going. So next one's Shore Pines, which you guys have heard some about Shore Pines Lift Station. We've got some upgrades coming there, a full overhaul at that station. New pumps, new controls, new wet well. Corbin Lift Station is another good example of a large lift station takes a lot of flow that could use a lot of love. It's, it's in rough shape. And we have some plans in the works for replacing pumps, controls, upsizing when we need to. Corbin is a good example of where we can upgrade pumps and actually make them smaller, more efficient just because of what technology is. And the biggest thing is really the bottom one, continued routine maintenance and emergency repairs. That's our bread and butter is keeping things working. So we spend a lot of time on upgrading and improving things, but most of our time is spent keeping everything running. So that's where we spend most of our time, and we like to keep everything just running rather than repairing. That's much easier to work with. Other than that...
Guys, thanks, that's good information. You know, we're spending a whole bunch of money on our wastewater plant and for many reasons, but it's in good hands. The maintenance and the operating condition in which you keep it is very much appreciated. And, you know, keep up the good work, we appreciate it. Any other comments? Joe?
Just want to say thank you guys personally for what you do. It's an extremely unglamorous job and a very thankless one, but it's also titanically important. I mean, when things are going right, nobody notices that you guys are even there. And if something goes wrong, it's incredibly obvious. So the, the fact that you guys can do what you do with 14 people and for the most part, nobody ever notices, thank you for doing what you do. We really appreciate it.
We cut out the unglamorous parts for you, so.
Making this presentation tonight as bad as you thought it was going to be?
No, not too bad.
Because I don't know if they're just on rotation and then they tell you you need to come and...
Well, they told us we were coming, but...
Sounds nice, though.
Well, good job.
Yeah. Good job. We appreciate it. Thank you for the opportunity to present.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Next item tonight, ordinances and resolutions, and tonight there are none. I, you know, I skipped that one. We already did that. How about we go down to the mayor comments? And tonight we have none. Council comments. And just again, let it be known that I was the first to congratulate the three...
And I'll be the second to congratulate you all three, and I voted for all three of you. Thank you.
We do not need an executive session?
We do not.
So the next motion is?
Adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You need adjourned, thank you.